Today on the Cajun Conservative Show, we talk about Trump's Town Hall meeting with CNN and how the media is mad because Trump did very well. Also, we talk about men wearing lingerie and how companies really didn't get it with Bud Light. And also, we're gonna have Mr. Marty Mealy. He is running for Attorney General in the state of Louisiana. We'll be sitting down with him and talking about his vision for the state of Louisiana. So stay tuned for the Cajun Conservative Show. How you doing, America? Welcome to the Cajun Conservative Show, where I talk about life, talk about liberty, talk about the pursuit of happiness. And yes, I show the world Cajuns do have intelligence. Hope you're having a good day, ladies and gentlemen, for this is the day that the Lord has made. Let's rejoice and be glad in it. Oh, ladies and gentlemen, I got a lot to talk about. And one being Trump's Town Hall meeting that was hosted by CNN. Now, ladies and gentlemen, this shocked me right here. First off, I didn't think Donald Trump should be on CNN, but this was probably the greatest thing since sliced bread that could happen to the Conservative Party in a long while. But before we get into that, please remember to hit the green button if you're on Rumble, hit the subscribe button if you're on YouTube, and hit the subscribe or follow button on the chosen podcast platform that you have decided to use. That's the Apple, Google, Spotify, Rumble, iHeart Radio, all the platforms. Go ahead and check us out. The Cajun Conservative Show, if this is your first time, welcome to the Cajun Conservative family. It is an honor and a blessing to have you here. So without further ado, because we have a lot to go ahead and dissect in this first segment. Also, before we move on, I forgot, we have Mr. Marty Mealy. I cannot believe I forget his name. Mealy, he's gonna be, he's running for Attorney General of the great state of Louisiana, Marty Mealy. Go check him out on his website. But stay tuned for that in the third segment. He's gonna be spending a couple of minutes with us as we talk about the Attorney General race here in the state of Louisiana. But ladies and gentlemen, going to this, alright. So President Donald Trump, former President Donald Trump, went ahead and brought out, went to CNN. Now, a lot of people would say this was retaliation to what happened with Fox News. If you remember, a couple of months ago, Fox News said that they were gonna be hosting the Republican Presidential Debate. The National Republican Association, the Republican Chair went ahead, the RNC, I couldn't think of the definition to save my life right there, but I got through with it. The RNC announced, hey, we're gonna have a set of debates. The first was gonna be on Fox News in August. We're gonna have all the top presidential candidates there. And President Donald Trump was like, no. Okay, I didn't give y'all the approval to do this debate. I am the leading presidential candidate, and I should have a say so of what happens. Now, we already dissected that in our early videos and our early podcasts, where Donald Trump does not have a say so, and what the RNC does. He is leading in majority. And basically, what he wants done is what the Democrats are doing to Joe Biden. Joe Biden, the president, he's the head of the, he's the leading candidacy for Democrats. We're not even gonna have a debate, because we think he's gonna win. And that's what Donald Trump wanted. Look, I'm leading, I'm gonna win. We shouldn't even have a debate. And I'm glad for the RNC not doing that, and not saying, well, Trump's ahead, we're not gonna have debates. I'm glad they haven't debates. But when that happened, Donald Trump went ahead and booked this CNN Town Hall, where Kalen Collins would be officiating this thing. And ladies and gentlemen, a lot of the topics on there, we can cover, and they talked about the 2020 election, they talked about January 6, Donald Trump even brought out his own notes. This Town Hall debate, and we really don't have time to really dissect everything that happened at this debate. But ladies and gentlemen, this was vintage Trump. Now, look, for all my audience, before you say, hold on, as you go on Team Trump, I wish Donald Trump would stay in the background. I wish Donald Trump would help people like Ron De Santas, or Nikki Haley, or somebody. But we always don't get what we want. And I'm gonna be honest with you, this is what we voted for in 2016. The President Trump that showed up on Wednesday night to the CNN Town Hall meeting was the Donald Trump that we voted for in 2020. This was the Donald Trump that stood up to the media. It was the Donald Trump that went ahead and said, listen, I'm not gonna go ahead and take any bull crap from you guys. I'm gonna go ahead and I'm gonna speak my mind. And that's what Donald Trump did. Now, they jumped on a lot of things, and I'm gonna compare the MSNBC interview that Joe Biden did a couple of weeks ago to this one, because there was a lot of differences. And in that, you see the hypocrisy of the left. And what, now, this was not the same commentator, this was not the same host. So you can't compare both these people. But it's funny how the media always acts with Biden and Trump. But Donald Trump, you can disagree or agree, Donald Trump defended his stance on January 6. He went ahead and made a statement, Drill Baby Drill, when a question was asked. Just a lot of good things came from this Town Hall meeting. But as we could assume, ladies and gentlemen, the left, yes, the left, the left string media, was mad at CNN for even hosting the thing. Joy Behar from The View, which is on my list of how the heck did he make on, how did he get on TV, Joy Behar was saying, all those people in the room cheering on, this was a cult. All the Republican Party is a cult, because they follow after Donald Trump. Ladies and gentlemen, first off, we're not a cult. Some of the Republicans are the most free minded people out there. It's really the Democrat Party that is brainwashing these people, because they tell, the Democrat Party and the leftist leaning media tells people, you listen to our narrative, and that's it. You know, it's Republicans and Conservatives are some of the only people on earth that will look at both sides. I get criticized this for all the time. I have been called the Fox Head News Person. Some people told me I am trying to apply for Tucker Carlson's job, which I don't think Fox News would ever offer that to me. I'm too, I'm small potatoes. But if you go ahead, and I've been called this, you're taking the side of Fox News. Ladies and gentlemen, I use Politico, I love the political paper. Do I agree with everything they say? No. But I read Politico. I read CNN Politics. On the flip side, I read the Daily Wire, I read the Daily Caller, I read all sides of the story. But not according to the left. According to the left, and according to Joe Behar, I'm part of a cult. This Trump cult, which I'm not in favor of Trump running, but I'm part of the Trump cult, because I'm sitting here, and I am defending Donald Trump's performance on Wednesday night. And ladies and gentlemen, people were upset at CNN for even hosting the thing, for saying, the reason they're mad is because Donald Trump got the upper end of the deal. But if CNN would have roasted Donald Trump and got him on a got you moment, they would have been running that clip all the time, saying how Donald Trump was a buffoon, and how Donald Trump was an idiot, and how, they can't say that with this Town Hall, because Donald Trump said there's so much of a good performance, and also the audience helped. And that's another thing that media is upset at CNN for, because, oh, CNN had Republicans and some undecided voters. They didn't put no leftists in there. They didn't put no, they didn't put nobody that would question Trump. The event was not set for that. It was for people that wanted to hear Donald Trump and ask Donald Trump questions. But the media is all, as they say in Cajun country, got their casals in a bunch, because CNN just brought Donald Trump on the stage, or they gave him an opportunity to go ahead and spread lies, and spreads evil. Even one of the View women on there was saying, they should have just ran lies, 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 all across the screen. Ladies and gentlemen, the thing of it is, they don't want Donald Trump heard. And the icing on the cake, like I said, Donald Trump had a strong performance. They don't want Donald Trump heard whatsoever. They don't want Donald Trump bringing out his policies. They don't want Donald Trump talking about building a wall. They don't want Donald Trump talking about immigration. They don't want to talk about none of that. Why? Because Donald Trump will take the stance he did in 2016. Because if you listen, if you watch this debate, which I've watched majority of it, and read tons of articles on it, they did not ask Donald Trump a lot of previous, like, for things that are happening now. Okay, when he did get asked, the moderator, Ms. Kalen Collins, would go ahead and interrupt the president and try to stir it to something he did in the past. I'm gonna use the example that comes to mind right now, is Drill Baby Drill. When that person in the audience asked him that question, and he said Drill Baby Drill, and he was talking about what Biden was doing, the moderator was talking about stuff he did in the past. She was trying to interrupt him. So ladies and gentlemen, they did not ask about current issues. They didn't ask about inflation that I'm aware of. They didn't act, now, Donald Trump did a good job in bringing out them points, and this is why he had a good performance, because he was not dealing with the media. He was not dealing with CNN's selective questioning, and he would bring it to the point of Joe Biden and what he has done to ruin this nation, and what he's gonna do when he's the President of the United States again, if he gets elected. Ladies and gentlemen, and this is why the media has got their casals in a bunch, and they're mad at CNN, because it did not favor them. It did not favor the left's agenda, because you remember, for the last four years, almost four years, we've been hearing that Donald Trump's evil, and how Donald Trump can't do his job. But don't you know that when Donald Trump was President of the United States of America, we had a really good economy? Don't you know that when Donald Trump was President, he had a secure border? Not like what we have now, at the end of Title 42, where you have migrants coming in, and the president is saying, hey, we're not even gonna check them, we're gonna let them come into the United States, and not give them a court date. Now, thanks to Florida, that Florida went ahead and said, you know what, we're gonna put a lawsuit on that. And it's been held up. The judge said, no, you cannot do that. Now, the Justice Department and the White House is saying, no, we want you to put a stay on that stay, so we can do that. You didn't have that in Trump's administration. Because Trump understood that if you allow people to come in illegally, it's gonna cause you problems. It's gonna be, it's gonna be issues with this. But Donald Trump, going back to, Donald Trump did exactly, he did a phenomenal job with the CNN Town Hall. But the left, the left don't want Donald Trump. Now, I wanna go ahead and bring out some points that I seen, the differences between this Town Hall and President Joe Biden's interview with MSNBC, who we broke down pretty a lot on the program. I read, I try to read a lot of the questions and the answers that Biden was asked, and his answers to it. But ladies and gentlemen, if you look at this, okay, I wanna go back to that. Donald Trump, Donald Trump Town Hall, every time Donald Trump was about to start hitting something home, the moderator would come out and ask him, or try to ask him a question, or throw him off, basically not giving him the time to answer the question. Now, I made a point on my show, and I, look, I'm gonna have an interview later on in this show. I try to let my guests have some time to talk. And now, if it's something, I rarely interrupt my guests. And I made a policy on if it's a Democrat or Republican, to let them talk, because I invited them here to give their point of view, and we can have a dialogue. As long as they respect me, I will respect them. That's how I've done this. But ladies and gentlemen, you can tell from CNN and other news organizations, when they have Trump on, or when they have somebody they don't like, they go ahead and they attack each other. Or they go ahead and they, well, hold on, hold on, hold on, I'm gonna interrupt you right there, without giving him the full benefit of the doubt, and without them saying, hey, let me finish, let me let them finish their statement. I'm gonna write this question down, and I'm gonna ask them later. But this woman, was Ms. Kalen Collins, who's a young reporter, CNN threw this young reporter to the wolves, because you're going up against one of the sharpest minds in the Republican Party. I know people might disagree with me on this. But you have, Donald Trump's real smart and knows how to play the media. And this poor woman was just trying to do what she, I even heard some people like The View, The View, oh, she should have had something in her ear to tell her what to ask. But she kept on interrupting Trump, and she tried to get the I got you moment to Trump. Now, if you compare this to the interview with MSNBC and Joe Biden, don't you remember, if you watched the interview, or watched the videos of it, the lady would act, literally, this was one of her questions, would ask Biden something, and in the middle of saying, Mr. President, we know it's no fault of your own, but we have to ask the question anyway. And just listen, Biden could answer any question. And he was getting no feedback, no, no pushback, nothing. But in this Town Hall, the media tried to shut Trump up. Now, this event was supposed to be an hour and a half. They cut it down to an hour. Like I said, Trump did a brilliant job of bringing out a lot of facts. Donald Trump went ahead, and when they were talking about January 6, brought out tweets that he said throughout January 6. And ladies and gentlemen, this Trump, look, and like I said, this, let me say like this, if Trump was the only Republican candidate running for president right now, I would probably say, hey, he got my support. That's how good of a job he did. Now, like I said, the media catching their casals in a bunch, and saying, huh, CNN, no, CNN did right. I'm gonna, look, I'm get props to CNN. I don't never get props to CNN. But they did two things right so far this year. They fired Donald Lemon, and they also, and they also went ahead and gave Donald Trump a platform again. They did right. Trump is the lead, is the frontrunner of the Republican Party. And look, I don't care who you, look, like I said, I'm a DeSantis supporter. I like Rob DeSantis. But ladies and gentlemen, Donald Trump is the frontrunner. You have to give Trump an audience. If not here, he's gonna go somewhere else and do it. But the reason the left doesn't want CNN giving him audience is because they know if Donald Trump gets asked a lot of questions, and he gives them a good report, guess what? They're dead ducks in the water. And ladies and gentlemen, this is why the media wants Donald Trump shut up. This is why they don't want Donald Trump on interviews. This is why Donald, this is why they don't want Donald Trump on major news platforms. On a final note, CNN, this is a good business strategy, CNN's ratings have sank so much since Donald Trump's out of office. Do you know that they went ahead and put Donald Trump in, if I'm not mistaken, 3 million people watched it. And this isn't people that watched it after on various social media accounts. Ladies and gentlemen, this was brilliant for CNN to have Donald Trump. Now, the way they conducted, Ms. Kalen Collins conducted herself, could raise a question on it. But ladies and gentlemen, this Town Hall was by far the bright spot in Trump's campaign right now. And this is why I think Donald Trump should be on the debate stage as well. Because if Donald Trump performs like that, and look, I'm a Ron DeSantis supporter, I have friends that are Nikki Haley supporters, I have friends that are other reporters, other supporters of the candidates or whatever. But ladies and gentlemen, if Donald Trump does like this, it's gonna be hard for anybody to beat him. And like I said, it depends on the debate stage, we might have other, because, look, Long Shot candidate, Robert Roberts, was on this program. He has a shot to be on that debate stage. We finally get to hear what Mr. Roberts says. But ladies and gentlemen, Donald Trump did brilliant Wednesday night. And if he stays like that, it's gonna be hard for anybody to beat him, including the President of the United States. With that being said, we're gonna go ahead and take a break. We'll be right back in a few moments. How you doing, everybody? Isaac here, and I'm here to tell you about a great company based out of St. Martin Parish, Louisiana, called Hayes' Dump Truck Service. Hayes' Dump Truck Service serves the Lafayette and surrounding areas with all your needs concerning limestone for driveways, sand for pools, or for other little jobs around your house, or dirt to level off your property. If you have any questions about a job, call Lanny Hayes at 337-852-8043. Remember, Hayes' Dump Truck Service, where Jesus is Lord of the company. Remember, everybody, in the third segment, Mr. Marty Mealy, he's gonna be joining us for a interview. He is running for Attorney General spot. That is Jeff Landry's current spot. Jeff Landry is running for Governor of the great state of Louisiana. Can't wait to spend some time with Mr. Marty. Again, stay tuned for that. Ladies and gentlemen, also on the front of Donald Trump and Joe Biden, remember, I said at the beginning of the last, yeah, the end of the last segment, that if Donald Trump does what he did Wednesday night, and holds that prestige, to holds that professionalism, he would be hard to beat in 2024. And that is including President Joe Biden. You have people that run around and say, well, hold on, President Biden says he can't wait to face Donald Trump. He can't wait to go ahead and, you know, show how awesome he is. Ladies and gentlemen, there's a poll, I think it was done by ABC Wall Street Journal. I could be wrong. But ladies and gentlemen, President Trump was up nine points in that poll. Do I go ahead and trust polls? No, I do not. But early on in this campaign, if President Trump is leading President Biden by nine points, Biden should be scared. Listen, Biden should be scared of the Democratic primaries. We know the super delicates. We know of the way that the Democrat Party does. They try to get their candidate in there. But ladies and gentlemen, if Robert Kennedy Jr. keeps steaming the way he's doing, Trump might not be facing Joe Biden. He might be facing the Donald Trump of the Democrat Party, which is Robert Kennedy. And the reason I call him the Democrat of, the Trump of the Democrat Party, is because he hasn't been in office for a while. He came out of the blue, and he's gaining support, and he's beating the chief rivals. Now, that would be a, to be honest with you, that would be a big, big presidential election. If you have Trump, who was recently maybe one of the most controversial presidents of the United States, and one of the most popular, and then you have Robert Kennedy, whose family is some of the chief minorkeys in the Democrat Party, that would be, that would be a race. That would be something nobody's seen. But ladies and gentlemen, Biden has a lot to worry about. If Donald Trump holds himself like he did in that Wednesday Town Hall, it's gonna be hard for people to beat him. And it goes to the same point with this. If it would come down to Trump and Biden, or whoever in the presidential, he don't need to go to ask Chris Christie for help, because Chris Christie already backstabbed him in the back. Get somebody else to show you how to debate. But Donald Trump needs to do what he did going forward. And I think he would gain more support. It did, now, it did help him that the DA of New York and the latest case, civil case that he had, and a lot of people are saying, well, the only reason they're doing is because they don't like Trump. And that's, let me say, that's not hurting Trump. That is helping Trump a lot. So, alright, as I said earlier, if Florida AG sues Biden to stop planned mass release of migrants as Title 42 ends, the Biden plan literally said, hey, just let them in, and we're gonna just go get them later on. We're not gonna ask for court dates, we're not gonna document them, nothing. And then it was released today, let me go ahead and find that, that the US acts for emergency stay of judge decision blocking Biden from releasing migrants without court dates. Ladies and gentlemen, listen to the president's logic here. Hey, Title 42's ended. Okay, it ended last Thursday night, Friday morning at midnight. It ended. It's not there no more. This was a policy that Trump put into place, which was already in place in case of emergency, just as COVID-19 was, that would stop six sick people from coming in. Some Democrats even wanted to keep it, because they felt that the Biden administration was ill-prepared. But ladies and gentlemen, Biden's policy was basically this, we're gonna open the doors, we're gonna let them come in, and we're not gonna worry about court dates, we're not gonna worry about anything like that. We're just gonna let them come in. Ladies and gentlemen, that is dangerous. You don't know who's coming in, and first off, and second off, you won't even know where they at. You're gonna tell them to give court, now, how's that help? That's inviting every criminal from Mexico to come to the United States on a free deal. But ladies, now, this has been a disaster. Now, I wanna, and I mentioned in the first segment, the Florida AG, and the Florida legislation that put this lawsuit into place, did right. They're looking out for us. Who's their leader? Ron DeSantis. And look, ladies, Ron DeSantis is not for open borders. None of the Republicans are for open borders. But Biden doing this shows me that he wants open borders. And ladies and gentlemen, this right here, it is, look, and this is failing, just like everything else Biden took to. I heard, as one prominent Republican said the other day, it's funny that this is the only president that lost three ambassadors, not ambassadors, the UN Ambassador Buildings in three countries. Ladies and gentlemen, this is, and look, this is, this is, this shows how the president is not fit to serve office. And I'm not even talking, ladies, what president in their right mind would say, you know what, we're just gonna open the border, and we're not gonna document who's coming in. We're just gonna let them come in willy nilly. And ladies, look, the Republicans are doing their job. The Republicans put a bill, and they passed it on Thursday to stop what was going on. Now, this judge that put this judgment to say, look, we're gonna, you know what, we're gonna stop Biden's policy before it even goes on. He already looked at a bill. Florida already sued them on this. The Attorney General of Florida went on Fox News and said, listen, we already sued them on this. When we showed the judges, he said, it's forbade him the same law that I just rejected. But the US and some in high office tells that judge, hey, let's put a stay on that, and let's run our border policy the way it is. Ladies and gentlemen, even with Title 42, Biden has allowed more immigrants in this country than almost any other president in my lifetime. And this is sickening, ladies and gentlemen, it is sickening that we have a president that would do this. Daily Wire, federal judge strikes down law requiring people to buy, to be 21 to buy handguns. That's right, ladies and gentlemen, federal judge in Virginia ruled Wednesday that federal law that requires individuals to be at least 21 years old to purchase a handgun from federally licensed firearm dealers are unconstitutional. So ladies, now, I haven't heard too much buzz about this. This is a big story. So here in Louisiana and other states abroad, you're supposed to be 21-year-old before you can have a handgun. Apparently, this judge says, nope, that's not the case. You can go ahead and have a firearm. You can go ahead and buy a firearm at the age of 21. Now, the requirement to be 18 years old, I believe that still stands in play. I'm surprised I'm not hearing more about this. But ladies and gentlemen, the, look, if you're a Second Amendment person, you should like this ruling. Oh, no, Isaac, oh, no, this is gonna be, this is gonna give more opportunity to people to go ahead and commit crimes and mass shootings. It might give young people the protection that they need. And also slow down a lot, because, look, I had a debate this weekend where one person said, statistics shows that if you ban handguns, it brings down mass shootings. Also, statistics show that if there's a place that lets you carry firearms in, nine out of 10, somebody isn't gonna go in there and try to hurt the people in there. A lot of these gun shootings happen in gun-free zones. See, they hide that little fact off. And also, we, I was talking to my brother-in-law earlier, and he brought out this point, you know, a mass shooting scale is very thin. A mass shooting is considered three persons shot at. Not, nothing else. If three people get shot at, they consider that a mass shooting. Ladies and gentlemen, and look, all anti-gun activists are gonna be out there, they're gonna say, oh, Isaac, you're promoting violence. No, I'm not. I'm promoting the Constitution. And look, I had a debate on this, because I put a TikTok video talking about how one more gun law wouldn't have stopped what happened in Texas two weeks ago. And I had people telling me, oh, we need gun permits, we need, look, and I thought, I came up with a good argument on that, and I'd like to share it with my audience. If you have anybody ever says, oh, we need to require permits, we need to require things for you to have a firearm, ask them this question, do you trust the government, literally, to give you a permit, to say you are physically fit to buy a firearm? What if, what if, let's use the example of Christians, oh, we think Christians are crazy and this, and we're not gonna give them a permit to buy a firearm because they're mentally unstable? Or what about this situation, if a president says, hey, I'm anti-Second Amendment, and he calls that the government agents that are handing out the permits, and say, no, we're not gonna give them a permit. We're gonna stop all permits, so people won't be able to buy guns. Then, ladies and gentlemen, people wouldn't be able to protect themselves. Good argument on this as well. A lot of people think that the Second Amendment is to stop a tyrannical government. Part of it is. But ladies and gentlemen, what about our personal protection? The founding fathers put that in there for people to personally protect themselves. And ladies, like I said, this is just a few arguments of this gun legislation and gun problems in America, or the Second Amendment stance. And look, it's not, look, I am a gun lover, but I'm, that's not a gun lover. I'm a Second Amendment defender. And I wanna protect the Second Amendment. And I want to protect the Second Amendment. And I want, I want my rights to be protected under the law. All right, so ladies and gentlemen, I got this story here and look, I'm not gonna show the picture for my video audience, uh, but this is very disturbing. Um, lingerie, luxury lingerie company features male model wearing a bra and a panty. Uh, the lingerie company that uh ponders high-priced underwear for women is featuring a biological male wearing a bra and panties in their latest campaign ads. Luxe Outfits Honey Barbette showed a male model in this new ruby three-piece lingerie set earlier this week. In a post to the company's Instagram, uh, male model Jack Dupree, D U P R E E, poses in a red bra and panties and matching stockings and gutter next to a caption that reads in part, "We will continue to use our voice to support and empower the LGBTQ plus community, women and anyone who wants to feel fabulous in our lingerie." Ladies and gentlemen, a man, a a true, a true, a true straight man uh would would look at that, look at that dude and say, nope, that's what I did. I um, now, now, this is, this is the thing, ladies and gentlemen, this this person identifies as a non-binary. Um, the company's motto used to be uh women uh underwear for women by women. Now they put underwear to make you feel, ladies and gentlemen, I I I'm gonna be honest with you. And look, I got one more story before I continue with that because there's another example of this. Uh, women's, this is from the Daily Wire, women's fashion brand autograph, uh, auto, uh, ultra philanthropist, I can't say the big name words, big name dresser slam for using male model turns off comments on Instagram. Women's fashion brand faces major backlash from their fans following a campaign featuring a male model wearing women's clothing. The company posted a reel uh reel Wednesday on Instagram featuring a male with a shaved haircut dancing around while trying to, trying on variety of women's clothing. In one shot, the man twirls around in a skirt exposing his underwear. Backlash and negatives comments were so extreme that the social media team turned off comments on the reel. However, however, furious fans simply started commenting on different reels. Ladies and gentlemen, I look, I I I've talked about the LGBTQ community. I am not for the lifestyle, the lifestyle, not whatsoever. But ladies, this is disturbing. This is disturbing, especially, look, like I said, look, I'm not gonna show it on this platform. Yeah, because I am on YouTube and Rumble and Spotify Video. This is disturbing when you see a man in a three-piece lingerie. And it's disturbing when you see a man twirl around in a a dress and exposing his his underwear. Ladies and gentlemen, this this world is so confused right now. It's it's so confused. We know that there's two genders, a male and a female. And ladies and gentlemen, this this concept of men wearing women clothes is just disturbing. It is also the to try to push this upon, why do, why, you know, and look, look, oh, oh, why do companies think that we're gonna be okay with this? Okay, I can understand if you, if you live in the private sector and you can, you can go ahead, go ahead and do whatever you want. But ladies and gentlemen, I companies, I really wanna know what come, didn't Bud Light show you anything? Didn't the parent company of Bud Light that's trying to back away from Dylan McAvine show you anything that people don't want this? And look, I'm not trying to sound, sound like a pervert or anything, it's just, men don't like seeing men in lingerie. Now, we know if you're, if you're gay or transgender, I could understand that, but men don't want, you know, look, and even women, do you honestly think a woman's turning to try to find lingerie for herself and see a dude in a thong? Really appealing to them, especially a straight woman? Ladies and gentlemen, these companies don't understand that a majority of American people don't want this. The media might say, we want it, but the, but people don't want this, it pushed down their throat. And of course, media, companies really don't give a hoot, apparently, what their customer base is. Because like I said, uh, Bud Light putting a transgender woman who is a man on their cans, sales have dropped billions of dollars. I've heard that the parent company of Bud Light is paying for company people. They're not making a profit right now. Disney, Disney puts a a a LGBTQ couple kissing and it flops. And 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 movie people are wondering, well, why did, why is The Chosen getting so many good ratings? Oh, why is Jesus Revolution getting so much rating? Why is Super Mario Brothers getting so much good rate? Because there's not an agenda in it and it's clean. These movies are, yes, they're, some of, some of my quarter was fake-based, but they were clean. They did not have an alternate motive to them, they were some good content. People don't want ideology shoved down their throat. But these companies showing a man in a thong and in a, in a bra, which I don't understand that anyway. Like, the same thing with Nike with Dylan McAvine. These are dudes, they don't have breasts. What is the bra holding up? Their muscular or in my case, my fat putts? Ladies and gentlemen, I'm just, I'm just, ladies and gentlemen, and look, I know the lifestyle, I I I've discussed this on the program already where I'm against the lifestyle. I am. I don't think men should be wearing women's clothing. I don't think women should be wearing men's clothing. Now, one can pull it off better than the other. You know, my wife wears some of my T-shirts and it looks better on her than it does me. But ladies and gentlemen, there's this whole concept of, oh, we gotta be fair to the LGBTQ community. Listen to your customs, well, we're trying to be trailblazers. Yeah, you're gonna be a trailblazer to the bankruptcy court. Ladies and gentlemen, these companies just, they just don't get this. They don't get that, 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 that these people, these, these people, the people in America don't want this ideology down their throat. Oh, Isaac, what you trying to say, this company don't have the free will to do? No, they have their free will, they can go ahead and do it, but they're gonna suffer. Same thing with Bud Light, Bud Light thought they knew better than their customers and their customers show. Now they're trying to say, oh, no, oh, no, we need to fix it. Because America don't want that. America, mostly American people are are faith, family, people. And they believe what the Bible says. Now the media is trying to indoctrinate and Disney's trying to uh to propagandize all these kids, but this is a, this is normal. No, it's not normal. And ladies and gentlemen, there's this story of these, these men wearing women clothes and these, these companies that are, their, their whole, listen, that's a whole nother thing, their whole market is to women. And I'm, I'm gonna tell you a story and I don't know if she's gonna like it, but my, my wife, my wife says she don't listen to the program anyway. Uh, your wife don't support you? Oh, she supports me, she just don't listen to the program. Um, on another note, but I was talking to my brother-in-law earlier, because Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers, by the way. Uh, we had to get together for Mother's Day and I I was showing it and my wife walked in and goes, ugh. Did, men don't buy lingerie. I'm just, well, let me say like this, majority of men don't buy lingerie. What was this car, I'm just, I'm, 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 I wonder how the break room, did a man say, you know, I'm feminine enough, I think I should buy lingerie? And and we just start selling lingerie and start advertising to men. You show that picture, you, you, look, majority, look. I'm, I'm, I'm stepping on some, I'm stepping on some, some icy ground right here. Majority of women that buy those types of lingerie is to please their significant other. So you turn, oh, that's nice, oh, that's a, oh, I think my husband, ugh. You just lost all your business. Same thing with the dress, they, they don't wanna see a man twirling around and his junk is showing all over. And you, do you honestly think, now, this is a woman that's, that's man crazy, woo. But they're not gonna do that, they're gonna, ugh, ain't gonna turn you off. Because majority of women in this country are straight. I just, I just don't get, I just, why, why damage your core customers? It just, it just don't make sense to me. It don't make sense to me. All right, on the other side of the break, we're gonna have Mr. Marty uh coming on. He's running for Attorney General, please stay tuned for that. We'll be right back in a few moments.
Cheers and good on you, boys and girls. My name is Scott Ford and I have a show on Rumble. It's The Scott Ford Show, all one word, The Scott Ford Show, all one word, and it's on Rumble. I'd be very happy if you want to head in, subscribe, like Isaac. I'm a true American-loving patriot. Thank you, Isaac, God bless, enjoy your life.
You're my piece of mine. When this old world seems to get me down.
All right, everybody, welcome back to the third and final segment of the Cajun Conservative Show today. As advertised, we have Mr. Marty Mele. He is running for Attorney General here in the state of Louisiana, trying to fill some big shoes. But Mr. Marley, welcome to the Cajun Conservative Show.
Thank you, Isaac. I'm just really delighted to be here today and it was such a pleasure to get here a few minutes early and visit with your dad and your family. You have a beautiful family and those children are, those children are just, uh, I know they're precious, yeah, they're the light of your life, I know.
They, they, they act like that in front of y'all, but me, I don't know what's wrong. They, they, they turn the switch on with me later on. Now, I did, I I'm gonna be, because now we got video evidence.
Yes, sir.
Um, I did offer you some fried fish, some ribs and some stuff. You're like, no, you got it, you got an event after this where you're gonna be eating a little bit. So I was like, huh, oh, well, next time.
No, you were very gracious about that. And yes, I do have an event at Buck and Johnny's tonight in New Iberia and just looking forward to meeting some folks from around here and just keeping, uh, keeping the ball rolling.
You said Buck and Johnny's, that's in Broad Bridge, correct? Not New Iberia.
New Iberia, I mean, uh, Broad Bridge, yeah, yeah, yeah. Buck and Johnny's in Broad Bridge, my bad.
There, there's some good eating over there though, too, man.
Supposed to have some good, uh, good food laid out for us.
Well, now we know each other, you can give me in advance, I can plan for them. I like going to public events, you know, I love going to uh political events. Uh, but Mr. Marty, I wanna again, thank you for coming. This has been in the works in a while. We had a previous engagement, but unfortunately you had a death in your family and we, we give you our condolences on that. Uh, but we're glad we're, we're in here in the studio today. And uh, we have a heated AG race here in the state of Louisiana. We got some good candidates up there and you included. Um, first off, why, why you decide to run for Attorney General?
Look, uh, Isaac, I just, I think my uh, my life has brought me to this point. Uh, my resume, uh, I tell everybody when I get to speak to a crowd, my resume screams Attorney General. I've uh, I've got twenty-eight years of criminal prosecution experience. I've got twenty-five years of law enforcement experience. I hold a commission in West Baton Rouge right now and I've been a Vice President of the largest victims group in the state for a good while now and uh had a successful law firm since nineteen ninety-one. So we, we check a lot of boxes and I have the resume that gives me and the contacts, connections and the touch that gives me the ability to go and and administer this office properly and do a really, really good job for everyone.
So, so with that, what is the duties of Attorney General? We know, we hear that he's the top law enforcement officer of the state of Louisiana. Um, I was talking with a friend the other day, we were discussing uh AG uh Landry's position on when he made, he made a statement like, hey, when he becomes governor, he's gonna clean up New Orleans. And somebody asked me, well, isn't that his job right now? So, so as a candidate, I wanna ask you that, what, what is the duties of Attorney General? And cities like Baton Rouge, New Orleans, Shreveport, that have a high crime rate. Um, uh, Chicago and New Orleans unfortunately has a war on who has the most murders in a, in a month. So, so what is the duties of Attorney General?
I I appreciate you asking that question because, you know, the average person in Louisiana doesn't, doesn't have a lot of interaction with AG's office and and really doesn't know. Uh, there's multiple aspects of the AG's office. Let's talk first about what's on everybody's mind in Louisiana and that's crime. And I think you bring up a good point and I have no criticism of Mr. Landry and how he handled crime. But what needs to happen is that the AG needs to take a very, very aggressive approach to crime in this state and work with our other elected officials. The way, the way the prosecution process works at the AG's office is this. The district attorneys have, in each judicial district, have complete constitutional authority over whom, when, where, and how to prosecute. And that's a broad brush and a broad grant of authority. When the district attorney comes to a situation where he might have a conflict with a particular case, it comes to the AG's office through a referral process. So then the AG myself steps in and becomes just like the local district attorney, just like Bo Dewey here, just steps in and handles that case just like Bo would. And so that's what's going on with the criminal stuff. The AG's office has some independent authority to investigate certain crimes and has a bunch of investigators and basically a complete uh police force to go out and do that and assist other law enforcement. The AG's office is tasked with doing a bunch of training. Uh, justices of the peace are one area that the AG trains and and those folks are across our state and are generally uh, they're judges, but they're, they're lower uh on the totem pole in terms of jurisdiction and stuff. But they're very integral to what goes on in in day-to-day life. And it's important that they get trained. If the AG doesn't do it properly and doesn't do it efficiently and effectively and 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 a lot, do a lot of training, well, those folks don't get what they need. So we would be committed to do that. So that's on the criminal side of things. On the civil side of things, the Attorney General issues lots and lots of opinions. Uh, lots of folks can reach out and ask for an AG's opinion. You see legislators doing it, you see boards and commissions doing it, you see local politicians doing it. You see average, ordinary citizens asking for AG opinions. And you get a considered civil opinion that's well-researched and well-documented and it answers a legal question when it's posed. So that's very important. The AG defends the Constitution. If anybody raises a constitutional issue in the state of Louisiana over some statute that the legislature's passed, the AG steps in and and fights that as well. One thing that Jeff has done, and and my hat's off to to Liz, uh, his Solicitor General also, she's done a great job uh working, you know, with him and doing this. But they have fought government overreach and and my administration will continue to do that. You know, there's certain things that the president and Congress impose on us down here at the local level that are just untenable. They're not, they don't work, they're not constitutional, they're not right. And we will fight those battles. You can count on me to fight every single constitutional battle with regard to all of our constitutional rights. It with your dad and your brother, we talked about earlier. We talked about guns and we talked about, uh, you know, freedom of religion and we talked about some of the other constitutional rights. All those rights will be protected under my administration. And there's many, many other things that the AG's office does, we could go on for hours.
Yeah.
Uh, it's a, it's a large staff and there's lots of tentacles and and it provides lots and lots of services. The last thing I'd like to say is, I want everybody to understand what my administration plans to do with regard to requests for assistance. I'm pledging to you right now, just as I've done every time I speak to a group, I'm pledging to have a twenty-four-hour turnaround. If somebody calls my office and asks for assistance, you're gonna get a phone call back within twenty-four hours. Does that mean I can solve your problem within twenty-four hours? Absolutely not. Most of the time, it will take more time than that, but you're gonna get interaction and feedback. You're gonna feel like your situation is important to me because it is. And that's how we're gonna handle our business. Have a very transparent office. If you need to come see me, if you need to schedule an appointment, if you need to talk to me or one of my staff, we're gonna make that happen because it is we, the people. And I, I tell everybody all the time, this is not my Attorney General's office. This will be your Attorney General's office.
So, so with that being said, and and you, you, if you become Attorney General, even if Liz becomes Attorney General or somebody, uh, Shay Snyder or whoever, they, they have a, they have a good chance of having a Republican governor on their side with Jeff or someone of like, but what would happen? You become Attorney General and you have to deal with a governor, say Sam Wilsons. Sam Wilson's the only Democrat liable, the Democrat candidate in this position. He has already said he's gonna hold up a lot of what John Bell has said he was gonna do. We know with Jeff and with John Bell that uh they, they were always in court. They were always uh, not, they were always fighting each other concerning the law. Uh, the, how would you go ahead and face a Governor Sam Wilson? If, I hope we don't get there because the state of Louisiana don't need that. But as Attorney General, what would you do, you know, with that? Would you offer, say, look, we need to work together? I don't know if Jeff has done that, we haven't talked to Jeff yet, but would you work with the governor to say, look, let's try to keep it out of court, let's do this and this? Or would you go ahead and take it up to court if necessary?
One of the, one of the aspects of of my life and and my race has been that, you know, people generally trust me. They believe that I will do the right thing. I'm very transparent and, but I'm very bold about my personal mission statement and what I really stand for. And just like we talked about earlier, we talked about government overreach from uh Washington DC. Look, government overreach can come from, you know,
Yeah, Baton Rouge, the governor's mansion.
From Baton Rouge and you described it very well. And and so you have to be mindful of that. Do I wanna go kick sand on the governor and start a fight from day one? Not necessarily, but if a fight is needed, you have somebody with a strong personal constitution. you have somebody with a strong personal constitution who will do the right thing. And I will follow the state constitution. I will follow the federal constitution and I will follow the laws that Louisiana Legislature passes for us and has passed for us. Many, many laws on the books. Those need to be followed. If somebody gets out of bounds, then it'd be my job to get them back in bounds. And if it required, you know, filing a lawsuit in state or federal court to assist in doing that and let a judge somewhere decide whether they were out of bounds, I'm not afraid to, to take that initiative and start that fight. I would hope that we could all be reasonable and we could have conversations, you know, about things and try to get things done short of filing lawsuits. Cause as soon as you file that lawsuit, it just gets in a quagmire. You know, it takes sometimes years for those suits to work their way through the process. So is that my first initiative to file a lawsuit? Probably not. But is it in the arsenal and it, is it there in the quiver? And if we have to shoot that arrow, will we do it? 100%.
So, so with that, talking about lawsuits, uh, we have a president that's right now. He's anti-gun. He's anti-oil, anti-board of security. Uh, we just had the, uh, the Florida legislation and the AG over there file a lawsuit that stopped, uh, President Biden from bringing illegal aliens into this country, bring them to the United States without a court date. Um, that is in the works. Uh, we got articles today of how they're trying, the, the, the Attorney General Merrick Garland is trying to say, look, this release, let's do what we need to do. Um, but Jeff has a, I'm not trying to compare you to Jeff. Don't get me wrong. He's the last Attorney General of the state. Uh, but he has taken on the Biden administration along with other Attorney Generals here in, uh, in, in the country. Um, how would you approach that? Because you know, he has done one, I think with Minnesota, uh, Missouri. Uh, he has joined in with Mississippi. You, you have a lot of Attorney Generals in a state, uh, country that believe the same way you do. If Biden comes out and says, look, we're going to stop drilling and you see it's not in the best interest of the state or in the law. Um, what would you do with, you know, jumping up to that as well? I kind of brings to the same thing with Jeff, uh, John Bell. But how would you do that with the, a national level?
Isaac, I'm not sure how much you really understand about how all that works, but I can tell you that those Republican Attorney Generals, uh, the Democratic Attorney Generals meet as well, but they have conference calls frequently. They have conference calls frequently. They talk about national issues and it's no accident that, that, uh, you know, Texas might file a suit and Florida might file suit. It's, it's all very coordinated in an effort to push back on those liberal policies. You know, the liberal policies are really hurting us right now nationwide, you know, and, and, and not so much in Louisiana. We don't feel it as much as we see it in other areas of the United States, but where they go, we're going to go eventually if we don't do something about it.
Right.
So would I be willing to join other Republican AGs and fight those battles? If it means filing suit against the president to enjoy some, uh, crazy, uh, you know, uh, order that he's stroked his pen?
There's a lot of them.
There's a lot of them. Yeah. So, but listen, I just want to make sure the listeners understand this, that you gotta strike a balance. You gotta fight those battles and you only got so many resources, right? So you gotta strike, you gotta strike a balance. You gotta fight those battles and pick the ones you really, really want to fight. And you gotta save some resources to deal with what we got right here in Louisiana. We got lots of problems right here that need to be addressed. Crime. We got issues with, still got issues with blue tarps from Jefferson Parish all the way to Calcasieu on the roofs. You know, we, we got issues that are, you know, that need to be, uh, dealt with and, and the AG has, if he doesn't have authority to solve the problem, he's got a tremendous influence and a, and a big stick to be able to come to the meeting and people will listen to him. So I want to use that effectively and I want to use it reasonably. And I want people to work with me because I am going to be the voice of reason and I do bring people together. I don't divide people. Now, if I have to hit them over the head with my stick, if they won't listen, I'm not opposed to that. But the first move is always going to be, look, let's look at the issues. Let's see where we got common ground. Let's see if we can work these things out. That's going to be the, that's going to be play one in the playbook.
Awesome. Awesome. Um, on, on the, on the question of the, the state and the race, because we, we did mention earlier, you have, uh, John, uh, the Johnson Fansky that's running. Uh, I can't think of Liz's last name.
Liz Murrell.
Liz Murrell, um, which we, we are reaching out to their campaign, um, to try to see what we could do. Uh, but you have a lot of these Republican candidates in this race. Uh, you talked about one that was a independent. I didn't even hear of him yet. But you have a lot of, um, to my knowledge, no Democrat has come forward yet. Uh, but you have the, so it's basically just a Republican race for the Attorney General right now. Um, I, and you, you addressed this at the house. This is why I wanted to ask for people could hear. The, the race itself, you know, you got three Republicans running. And unfortunately Louisiana has a bad reputation of when it comes to the nitty gritty, there's rocks thrown and there's buzz, there're blood flying. As a candidate, and I hope your other candidates don't do this, but how would you approach saying, look, this is, this is what we're different. But at the same time, not trying to personally attack your opponent.
I've done this at every single forum. I've had an opportunity to speak at and, uh, one of the ones was in St. Martin Parish, uh, when they, last year, the end of last year, and it was very nice and well received. And so when I got a chance to take the mic, I did something unique. I lifted up my other two opponents and I spoke highly of them. And, and I also talked about Mr. Belton, who's the independent up in North Louisiana. And I spoke highly of him too, because I don't have any ill will with any of my opponents. I'm running for the office. I'm not running so much against them. I'm running to be the next AG. And so what I've done is I've, I've explained the differences. And, and the differences are this, while the others have nice resumes and they have, you know, something to bring to the party, we're different. My resume has to do with a crime fighting resume. 28-year career prosecutor. Look, I, I had the privilege and the, the terror of participating in two serial killer cases over there in West Baton Rouge. Uh, Tony Clayton was the lead prosecutor, but I got to participate in those cases. Sean, Sean Gillis was one and Derek Todd Lee was the other. And, and your listeners are going to know those names. And, and it was horrifying to see what those crazy men did to their victims. But because of those experiences and many, many more murder cases and lots of rapes and robberies and kidnappings and all sorts of stuff, all the way down to the little bitty stuff, I've done all of that. So I have, I'm well seasoned and I understand how it works. I don't have to have anybody explain to me how to go try a criminal case. I'm going to be able to instruct my, my prosecutors and my staff. When they get a case that's referred from the DA, we're going to be able to hit the ground running. And so it, that's something that the other two candidates don't have. They have other strengths, but they don't have that resume. And I think the citizens of Louisiana right now, at this time, want a tough crime fighter. And I am a tough crime fighter, but I'm also easy on victims. Now let me speak just a moment, if I could, to what I did with the juveniles. So in West Baton Rouge for 11 years, I had the privilege of doing an extracurricular activity for my DA. Went to him and said, hey, man, can I, can I run this early intervention program like Phil Haney, not too far away over here in three parishes near you had developed? I said, can I run this early intervention program? He said, no problem. He said, I don't have any money for you. I said, don't worry about it. I'm going to go raise the money. So I went to the legislature and I went to Kitty Kimball, who's the chief justice of the Supreme Court, and I aligned everybody and we got some money. And we got enough money to run the program. So I had counselors and I had, uh, caseworkers and I had, uh, myself and a couple of the lawyers that oversaw the program. And we ran that program effectively for 11 years and it dealt with kindergarten through the sixth grade. So that with those little children, just like your two little babies out there fixing to get to, get to the age they go to, go to, uh, you know, go to school and kindergarten and all that. If, if, if they were to get off track on behavior, on truancy, on, you know, just minor stuff, right now, there's really nothing in the system that, that addresses that. But it's so very important. It needs to be a statewide program. And, and I'm not saying we need to be the parents for, for every kid in the state, but if they get off track, we need to get them back on track. So from, the statistics show from kindergarten to sixth grade, what happens is the kids and their parents are compliant. They're compliant. They will, when given some instruction that makes sense and given some authority for which they need to apply, they will do the right thing and get back on track. Think about that for a moment. If you're in kindergarten through sixth grade and somebody gets you back on track and now you're in high school and you're successful, you don't have any more problems. You're not in, you're not in, uh, embroiled in crime and you get an education and you graduate and you go to college or go to trade school or go to work, what a blessing. We don't know how many kids we could save, but we know it was a lot. I was handling between 150 to 250 families a month for 11 years. We saved a lot of kids and got them back on track. When, what happens is really interesting and I'll close with this on this topic. When the kids get to be about seventh, eighth, ninth grade, your listeners completely identify with this. Boy, they get a little more hard-headed. By the time they're in 10th grade, they're running the show. They're, they're running the show. You're not running the show. They're telling you what to do. So if you don't get them back on track when they're young, then they fall into a, a downward spiral, I call it, you know? And, and sometimes it can end in a real bad situation. Sometimes it can just be minor stuff. But either way, you know, it's, it's rebuilding the fabric of Louisiana through our children. And so we need to be there to stand in the gap. If, if they start getting and going astray, we need to be there to, to nudge them back in the right direction. And that will pay so many dividends. So that's that group. The juvenile group, we know from the media what's going on with the juvenile group. There's, there's all sorts of problems with juvenile justice across the state right now. And it needs a total revamp, in my opinion. It needs some more resources. It needs people looking at it from every aspect. You know, from the criminal aspect, from the law enforcement aspect, from the counseling aspect, from the, you know, psychiatrist aspect, family aspect, church aspect. We need all those groups to come together and reform the juvenile justice system in Louisiana. Because we can't lose them. If we lose them and we put them in that system, then sometimes what happens is they come out so much more educated as a criminal. And then they become an adult criminal. And then, then they graduate to much more severe crimes.
So with that being said, do you, as an, would you as an Attorney General have some legislative uh, position to where, hey, you could maybe, you know, like, like we talked about our friend, uh, Jason Dozer, who you, um, who we had here and who you know personally?
Yes.
Does say the Jason, or even Chad, we can go Chad Boyer, that the other guy that's running for state rep in this pa, in this district. They, they become state reps and you really want to get this passed to where we go ahead and we talk to, like you want to do something for juveniles. Do you, as Attorney General, can just go to the legislators and say, hey, look, I want this done? Or would you have to team up with a state rep or a state senator to say, hey, can we try to get this done?
As the AG, uh, you, you, what you do is you go to your legislative leadership and, and you, you either pick out a friend or a group of friends or legislative leadership and you propose an idea. And, and for the most part, you're going to find a legislator that'll, will run with your ideas. Let me give you two ideas that I've been pondering lately in the juvenile arena. The first idea is that, you know, we probably need, and I haven't tested the constitutionality of this. It's just an idea, but we probably need some sort of two, three, four-strike rule with the juveniles, like we have in the adult system. You know, we have three strikes in the adult system, basically, and you, you're entitled to the habitual offender treatment, which has some very, very harsh penalties. Perhaps we could do something like that in the juvenile system as well. And so we would hopefully discourage those juveniles. Once they've committed one offense, educate them about you don't do that again or again, or you end up in a really, really bad place. Second thing is real, real important, I think, in the fabric of all that. You gotta attack, I call them the thugs. Okay? The thug life. What happens to these young kids, many of them, and I saw this when I did this early intervention program. If their male role model is not around, their dad, their grandfather, their uncle, perhaps they're in jail, perhaps they're dead. Perhaps they just left. They didn't show up for, you know, Christmas dinner. If they're not around, guess what happens to many, many of those kids? The female role models aren't as strong as they used to be. Used to, we had the matriarchs that grabbed all to the family and boy, they just ruled with an iron fist. We don't have that as much anymore. What happened is those younger kids get pulled out of those families by the gangs. And it may not be an organized gang in your area. You know, they may not have the Crips and the Bloods and all that craziness, but it's an informal gang. And they pull them in and they say, hey, man, come over here and hang with us. And when they, when, part of what hang with us means is that we're going to give you some tasks to do and you're going to go do them and you're going to earn your keep here. You're going to get your street cred. And that's what happens a lot of times with this juvenile crime. We've seen it in Baton Rouge that young lady, Ally Rice, that was killed at that intersection with the railroad track and everything. You know, they haven't solved that case yet, but purportedly there were a couple of, uh, younger males, black males that walked up to the car and just shot seven or eight times into the car and then just disappeared. And I would submit to you that they didn't do that on, by accident. They did that as a deliberate order from somebody that they were in a network with. And so that's what's going on. That's, that's really what's going on in America right now. And we got to attack that. So let's connect the dots. Let's go back to that thug that ordered all that. And if we can prove it, let's, let's put him in prison for life or kill him. Put him to death.
Yeah.
And that would send a strong message to the thugs out there that we're not going, we're not going to let you run your family that way.
Yeah. And it go, and like you said, prove it. You got to bring it to a court.
It's got to be proved.
Through, through the jury process and all that.
And it would need legislation to, to flesh out what I just described, you know, so that you didn't, I don't want to violate anybody's constitutional rights. But at the same time, if that's what they're doing, if that's a conduct that's going on, I want to be strong about it. And I want us to have a remedy to start to address it. And I want us to fight back and push back, just like we're pushing back in Washington. Let's push back on some of our local crime issues. So.
So one more question before we wrap it up, Mr. Marty. I, I want to ask this because you did, you brought about bringing back to the states and stuff. And I, I've had some people come up to me and say, they don't support Jeff because Jeff's more worried about the woke issues. Uh, kind of like what Ron DeSantis does in, in Florida with the wokeness and all that. Um, do you, do you want to, do you want to focus on them things? What's happening on the state? Or do you just see, hey, look, the, the Louisiana Attorney General should focus more on the stuff that happened. Now, if it comes to Louisiana, we have to deal with it. But woke culture and stuff like that, what do you, what is your outlook on that? Like it's for, you know, because we, we have, we had, I think we had Jeff already on a couple of things with, uh, and look, I, I like Jeff. So I'm just, but, uh, people tell me, oh, the, the drag queen story hours, the, the, the LGBT wokeness or the school stuff. Jeff's too focused on that. He's not focused on the state. What do you, what do you look at that opinion on that, on, on that particular subject?
Look, and, and I'm not trying to alienate anyone, but I, I do have a very strong personal constitution and I'm a Christian. And I was raised that way and I've lived my life that way. I've made many mistakes, but at the same time, I, I serve the one who's perfect and I read the Bible. And, and I'm going to tell you, there's, there's so much in our society that I believe is a spiritual warfare.
Yeah.
And I think, I think the evil one is, is using some of these things that you just described to, uh, to try to undermine what's going on in our, in our families, in our society, in, you know, in our communities. And would I fight back, uh, on those principles from a conservative standpoint? Yeah, 100%, 100%. Uh, and like I said earlier, I want to be able to balance the resources. We got to pick our battles. But at the same time, we can't lose the war. You know, we can't, we can't win the battle and lose the war. So we gotta, we gotta understand the big picture. We got to fight back where we need to. And, and there's a concerted effort across the country with the conservative Republican AGs that are focused on many of those issues. And, and that's where a lot of that comes from. You know, I can tell you this. I mean, I, I, I think there's plenty to do on the crime front. We got to get that under control. Cause if we don't get that under control, we don't have a, a peaceful place for anybody to live. Doesn't that affect business? It affects, uh, education. It affects everything. It affects your kids wanting to stay here. Your little babies, when they grow up, are they going to want to stay here if they can't find a job? Because companies won't come here because the crime's too high? We gotta, we gotta prioritize what we're doing. Let me, let me end with this, Isaac. So one of my goals would be to have a council of 100. And my council of 100 would grab people from all walks of life. I want professional people. I want, uh, common people. I want farmers. I want doctors. I want lawyers. I want engineers. I want people that work in the plants. I, I want every aspect of life. Every aspect of life on my council of 100. And what I would do is I'd meet with those folks every three months. And I would brainstorm the issues that are relevant and, and, and current in the state of Louisiana. And that could include something that's coming from Washington and that's fine, but I want to get those hun, those issues laid out. Have somebody professionally do that with us. Have lunch. The next month, we prioritize the ones from the previous three months. We pick out the top 10. So we're going to create a top 10 hit list of things that are very, very important and relevant to my group. Does that mean that I'm going to follow their advice and do everything that they say on that top 10 list? No, but it's going to keep me as a, as a human being relevant to what everybody wants and what's happening. You might serve on my council. I might, I might do a year with the same people and then rotate those people off and do some new people and keep it fresh and keep it, and, and keep it relevant. And, and so that's what I'm looking for. I'm not going to be an AG by committee. That's not what this is. This is about allowing ordinary citizens in the state of Louisiana to have some input and impact on what their government's doing. Cause it's their AG's office. It's we, the people. It's not we, Marty. It's we, the people. And, and I will always stay true to that and always remember that.
Mr. Marty, as we close this spot, uh, this section up in the podcast, uh, tell the listeners if they're in the state of Louisiana. I know we got some from abroad, but our citizens of Louisiana, um, where they can find you and if they have any questions and give us a closing statement. As I tell a lot of my, uh, everybody that comes through this, this studio, if I was a voter undecided, what would you tell me for a final argument?
Sounds good. So I'm going to hold up this card right here. This is my four-point plan that we've developed and everything. And it has my website on it. It's a www.martymealy.com. And it has my cell phone and I'm going to give that to you. It's the same cell for 30 years and I'm not changing it. 225-266-5959. So you can go to my website. to my website, martymailey.com, or you can call me on my cell, two-six-six-five-nine-five-nine. In Baton Rouge, it's a two-two-five area code. And what I would want you to know is that the four things that I think are most important is to be tough on hardened criminals. Not on, you know, the criminal justice system, you got to help out people. And I did this for years and years and years as a prosecutor. Probably eighty to eighty-five percent of the people that came through the, the DA's office and through my prosecution experience, they, they got help to get back on track. About fifteen percent were just hardened criminals that didn't deserve to be helped. They needed to go somewhere where they could not be a danger to you and I. And so we took care of putting those people in that place. And so that's what I want you to know about that. I will fight for victims' rights. I've been a vice president of crime fighters, the largest victims group in the state, and dealt with victims all across the state, and, and helped them navigate the criminal justice system and, and sue their broken and aching hearts from their losses. And so I would continue to do that. I'd promote the early intervention program that I described to you earlier. And I would always, always, always be pro-life, pro-gun, and pro-Louisiana, and fight for all your constitutional rights. So if you want somebody like me that has a tough-on-crime background, I think you would be well-suited to join our team. And I would be honored to have your vote on October fourteenth.
Mr. Marty, thank you for coming on the Cajun Conservative Show. If you ever want to come back, just let me know.
We're going to come back, Isaac.
We're going to come back.
Thank you, sir.
All right, everybody. That was Mr. Marley Mailey. He is running for Attorney General in the state of Louisiana. Please go ahead and check out his website and give him a call if you need. With that being said, we want to thank you for listening to this episode of the Cajun Conservative Show. Please remember to like and subscribe to the podcast. Also share with a friend. Remember, Jesus Christ is King, and he's coming back, and he's coming back soon. So don't be fated of heart, because Jesus has overcome the world. If you want to know Jesus as your personal Lord and Savior, reach out to me at thecajunconservativefive@gmail.com and ask me how to make Jesus your Savior. And I will tell you how to make heaven your eternal home. Until next time, be blessed, be encouraged. You have a good one.